So, good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. Can we begin with a motion to waive the rules of council?
Removed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules have been waived. Next, we'll be, we'll move on to roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Siz Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Will we all please now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after for a moment of silence?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, eternal, just and absolute.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Removed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. I believe Councilman Strasburger.
If, oh, that's okay. That's okay. If everyone for James Gilmer can come to the front, please. For those of you who might not be aware, Alvin Ailey Dance Company is here performing in Pittsburgh for the first time, I believe, in more than 10 years. Do you have the exact number?
More than 15.
More than 15 years. And we have a couple of local Pittsburghers who are dancing for this world-renowned company. So, we're honored to have, to be able to present one of them this evening, and we'll present another one later. But there, one of them has a family here in Pittsburgh who's joining us today, family and friends. So, whereas, James Gilmer was born in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, on April 17th, 1993, with a vibrant world of space to explore his gift of dance at his childhood home of Highland Park. And whereas, James's love for the arts was fostered by a musically and artistically inclined family that enrolled him in ballet and tap dancing classes at the Larry Servie School of Performing Arts at the age of five. And whereas, James Gilmer received a scholarship to attend the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater School at the age of eight and went on to attend and train at the Pittsburgh Creative and Performing Arts School, Kappa, and where in 2009, he was chosen to dance for First Lady Michelle Obama at the G20 Summit. And whereas, James performed with texture contemporary ballet and joined Cincinnati Ballet in 2011 after graduation. And whereas, James was promoted to soloist in 2015 after dancing with the Cincinnati Ballet for six seasons, performing works by Victoria Morgan, Amy Seawright, Septim Wembree, Ohad Naharian Val, kind of, kind of Pariali, Annabelle Lopez Ochoa, Edward Leong, Jennifer Archibald, and George Balanchine, among others. Whereas, Mr. Gilmer joined Amy Seawright's imagery in 2013 and OCD Dance Company in 2017, performing works by Brenda Way, Katie Nelson, and Kate Weir during the summer seasons. And whereas, despite his great talent, James faced adversity as an African-American dancer, and his physical attributes in the field where many performers did not look or move like him. And whereas, James joined the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater in 2019, fulfilling his childhood dream of joining the Dance Company, touring both nationally and internationally with the company. And whereas, in November of 2021, James performed in Twyla Now, and in October 2022, he performed in the Upper Room and nine Sinatra songs for New York City Center's celebration of legendary choreographer Twyla Tharp. And whereas, James Gilmer will be performing as a member of the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater Company at the Benidorm Center for the Performing Arts on May 9th, 2023, featuring a mixed repertory program that includes contemporary works and the beloved signature work Revelations, a universal anthem of resilience that resounds anew more than 60 years after its premiere. And whereas, James Gilmer is a proud son of the city of Pittsburgh and continues to honor our city through his talent and love of dance performance. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the outstanding talent of James A. Gilmer, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 to be James A. Gilmer Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Congratulations. We are honored to have some members of his family here today. His mother, his grandmother, and his aunt here, and as well as friend Richard Persakian. Who would like to speak first? All right. Ms. Joy, here you go.
It is an honor to have my grandson acknowledged. I know how awesome he is. And being an arts advocate here in Pittsburgh, it is wonderful to be able to stand here and say that everything he has accomplished, he was prepared in Pittsburgh with the arts community, teachers, the colleges, you know, all of the movement classes. Everything was right here. He came out of the right kind of, kind of foundation where music and arts were appreciated, where his parents appreciated his talent and didn't thwart it and say because he was a boy, he couldn't dance. No, his mother, she's no, we're going to develop this. And of course, I was here after living in Southern California for 35 years in the arts. I knew he had something special. So, we developed that, had him prepared. He went through all of the schools. And when he got ready to leave here, all he needed to do was to go and audition for a company because he was prepared by the Pittsburgh arts community. Being out there for a while, he realized that, you know, he was different. He was treated differently. And this little boy in him, you know, who had all of these dreams, you know, it brought about other fears. But diversity mitigated much of that bias. And James, it's his, the reason he's not here this morning, he's doing two classes at Kappa, and this afternoon, he's doing a class at PBT. Because the first thing the students say when they see him is, James, how did you do it? They have credentials, they have skill level, but how do we get a job? They don't know how to, what did you do? So, he wanted to go there to do that, and he still has to perform tonight. But he's done residencies all over the country. And to be able to be chosen to be with Alvin Ailey, all of the dances in Revelations are permanently endowed around the world. So, he gets to go and express all of that cultural knowledge, those cultural roots that are in the history of Alvin Ailey. And he's so proud to do that. And we are so proud of him. There's a scripture in Proverbs 18. It says, "A man's gift," a man's gift is, is, is his pride and joy. But he brings, other things are brought to him because of that gift. And that is absolutely a fact with James. He didn't have to do anything. He went to New York, and everything came to him. He's been on the wall of Lincoln Center. He's been on the buses in Harlem. He's done residencies in Jamaica, other states here in the, here in the United States. He has done so much, nonstop. We were talking about him this morning because Richard is our extended family. James was, his mother says he was a little older than five when his first play here, but Richard has dressed him for different performances. He's been there with us all the way. And James is 30 now. So, he, all of these things, Richard has been a part of it. He did a wonderful residency in Milwaukee with his aunt that had hundreds of students as well as professional dancers. You know, the, not only the students want him to perform and teach, so do the adult dancers. So, we are absolutely proud of him because his values, his character, his work ethic, his choice of, when you see him, he changed the face of dance. He's very muscular. He has lots of hair. But he has his own style. And they did not stop him. As a matter of fact, other dancers have adopted his style, his movement. And I really wish that you could see him because he's absolutely amazing. Thank you so much for this honor. And I certainly want his mother to say something.
Well, I could say ditto for a lot of that, which would be true. But yes, I am the mom. And this, this, I'll just give you a little bit of a side note about James as he was, you know, growing up and we were going to dance here and there. He would be the first to say, Mom, it's time to go. I don't want to be late. And I did never have to say to him, do you have this? Do you have that? Are you prepared? No, he'd say, let's go. I need, you know, I need to be there. So, he has always been that way, which I'm really thankful for. I didn't ever have to kind of keep up with him, you know, what he was doing. So, but what can I say? It's been a pleasure to be a dance mom. I'd do it all over again if I had to. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say that a lot of hands have blessed James artistically in the city. There are too many artists and choreographers to name. But it's, it shows a lot how deep our artistic values are in the city, and how important the arts are to the city, and how it's an economic driver, as a lot of you know. Tonight, another friend, Kyle Abraham, who a lot of you know, who have, you've honored here before, will present a work on the program. And James will be the dancer. So, actually, James will be in three pieces tonight, all of the pieces that are presented. So, that's how important he is to the company. A couple of weeks ago, I met with Twyla Tharp. She was in town. And she understood how valuable James is to the dance world. So, it's like, how important and the depth of talent we have in the city that we have artists represented at all levels of dance and theater and music. So, it's, thank you very much for honoring James. Appreciate it.
Reverend Burgess?
Oh, yes. To the family, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm not there. Love you very much. I think, I just want to make it, we all be aware that, that James is also a J. Gilmer son, who is our Stop the Violence Coordinator. And I think of James as my nephew. And so, I do want to say that although we are honoring him for his artistic gifted experience and talents, I just want to say that he is a good person. He is a spiritual man and a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful young man who is as good of a person as he is a dancer and a delight to be around. And so, to the family, you know, I love you. And to my nephew, I love him too.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess. Can we get all members of council up here?
Yep.
Thank you.
We now have a number of proclamations to be read into the record, beginning with Councilman Coghill. Do you have a proclamation to be read in?
Yes, please.
Councilman Coghill presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 11th, 2023 to be Ted and Eileen Fisher Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been approved. We have a number of them, so I'll just take them all in a row. We'll do the motion at the end. If we could have Councilwoman Strasburger, and Councilman Kraus, Council President Smith, and Councilwoman Warwick read as well.
Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 to be John Mair Garland Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilperson, Council, Councilman Kraus presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 18th, 2023 to be Dr. Selma Witchell Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 13th, 2023 to be Dan Berry Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 13th, 2023 to be Elliot West End Athletic Association Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Warwick presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 13th, 2023 to be Patonka Tonk Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Could we have a motion to approve all the proclamations?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations have been approved. Next, I believe we have a will of council sponsored by Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilman Wilson, and Councilwoman Gross.
Councilman Coghill, Council, Councilman Wilson, Councilmember, Councilperson Strasburger, and Councilwoman Gross present, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls upon Allegheny County DHS, PNC Bank, Allegheny Health Network, UPMC, and other agencies, organizations, and companies to come together to fund and build transitional housing for the city's unhoused community.
Are there any comments being offered by members?
Just to say that the unhoused committee looks forward to presenting our findings at a press conference today at 1:00 PM.
Councilman Coghill, we're on your will of council. Is there anything you want to add?
Sorry, I had to step out. Yes, thank you. Did, did we read the will?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to thank the committee that our president put together. Today, we're having a press conference that concludes, you know, what our suggestions will be. And this will counsel is really just calling on all partners, everybody, to, you know, step in and we hope guide the future of how we're going to combat homelessness in the city of Pittsburgh. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and thanks to all members and your support, and especially the committee. So, and I encourage everybody to be there at 1 o'clock today, right outside council chambers.
Thank you. Madam President.
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilman Coghill for chairing the committee and for all the members for being a part of it. It's not an easy task, and I think, you know, coming up with some solutions is going to be challenging. But I want to thank them for their continual work on this, and they really did a lot of, a tremendous amount of work. So, thank you.
Thank you all. Can we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The will of council has been approved. Next, that takes us to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity is not permitted. When you are called to please, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Global Intelligence Society, National Congress, President of 2024, GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. A concern of council is education and clearly dance and ballet. Congratulations to Mr. Gilmer. But I must not let pass references to Marius Ivanovich Peses, Dakhlev, and Balanchine. Dr. Shirley Anne Jackson, a female XX MIT PhD, physicist educator, Black African descent, has preferred to emphasize diversity over equity. I agree with that. At the 18 April 2023 City Council for PPS Take a Father to School Day, and at the 3 May 2023 City Council for PPS Obama School, City League Girls Basketball Champs Day, $100,000 a year, non-vote by voter verified for whom Mr. Ganey joined the $200,000 a year non-Pittsburgh citizen voter elected, school board appointed PPS Superintendent Dr. Wayne Walters. Black Dynamite Ganey possessing no legal authority over Black Lightning Walters called Walters the greatest superintendent in PPS history. I was reading Science in the second row of the council room audience side on 2 May before the start of the meeting. Dr. Wayne Walters sat down in the first row directly ahead of me. He said nothing to me. After the Black Dynamite and Lightning-led city league carnival show, Walters returned to his seat to get his bag. And I said something to him. I said, Dr. Shirley Anne Jackson, no register, again, Shirley Anne Jackson. Most of the Obama City League champs were Black Afri, of Black African descent girls. Dr. Walters had just congratulated them on being scholar athletes. But I have doubt that the girls understood what, what, how to read an X-Y coordinate grid. There's no evidence of that whatsoever. Dr. Walters ignored the reference to Shirley Anne Jackson, who is a female PhD of Black African descent, a scientist, educator, whose presence there, at least verbally, as a role model, is unsurpassed. And unsurpassed not just for Black kids and Black girls, but for all of us.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullin.
Here. I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Pittsburgh Public Schools Administration has offended our sensibility. We are being harmed by this rogue school board. We have paid our mortgages. We have paid our taxes. We have voted and attended community meetings expressing our outrage and concerns. The Board of Education has not even sent a single official to represent them at our community meetings about this derelict school building. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continues. Why won't he advocate for we, the people, who had been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of Bon Air. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, torn down. Five, Parks and Trees Pittsburgh Fund made to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Michael J. Mullin Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullin touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullin lived a full life as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Shady trees, not...
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Pomai Chokmam Yahaylihi, excuse me.
Greetings, everyone. Grand rising. Saint Maket Aliki. My title is East Pomai Chokmam Yahayli. And I'm a grand council chief member of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I'm also the grand dika chief of my nation, the Yonkwe Onwaye of aborigines nations. And so, I'm here today to speak a little bit about the Delaware Treaty and how important that treaty is, and it's still in full effect today. For it said that all offenses or acts of hostilities by one or either of the contracting parties against the other be mutually forgiven and buried in the depth of oblivion, nevermore to be had in remembrance. And this first article is speaking about our relationship as the aborigines to your government and to your people, and that we had made this promise to each other, the ancestors did, that we would not harm each other any longer, and that we would work together, and all debts will be mutually forgiven. All egregiances shall be mutually forgiven. And in the House Congress Resolution 331, Congress agreed and acknowledged that the Iroquois Confederacy of Nations wrote the Constitution. And it was Benjamin Franklin who also admired our concepts, you call democracy. These were principles that we lived our lives by, and the Great Law of Peace. So, as we move forward and realize that there is a duty and an obligation for your government and for your municipal officers and everyone who's a citizen and a non-citizen on our land, that you work with our people in restoring our lands, restoring our waters, restoring our air to the prime place that it was when you first arrived. And it is also very important to realize in the states here in the Delaware Treaty, whereas the enemies of the United States had endeavored by every artifice in their power to possess the Indians in general with an opinion that it is the design of the states, aforesaid, to extirpate the Indians and take possession of their country. To obviate such false suggestions, the United States do engage to guarantee to the aforesaid nations of our people and our heirs and our territorial rights in the fullest and most ample manner that has been bound by former treaties, as long as we, the aborigines, shall abide by and hold fast the chain of friendship now entered into. And we've always maintained our friendship with your people, with your government, not so much on your side. So, the day is a different day. The day is the day, it is awakening of our children and the Aboriginal children all across the Americas, as we are now standing and we're saying, stand in solidarity with us. For it is your ancestors that caused...
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. We will now move to comments from those in chambers. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up K-DU or Irving at the top of the hill. First, citizens, this is the last day for absentee ballots to be turned in. You can still turn them in to the city council building or come get one, but on Ross Street, they have drop-off sections. On Ross Street, there's city employees out there, they'll take your drop-off absentee ballots. I said that because a lot of times people don't know when's the last day that they can turn it in, and today is the last day. You have enough time, if you have transportation to get down, to get an absentee ballot to fill out, or if you're dropping off one on Ross Street. It's very important. I believe in voting. I believe, you know how much I believe in this government? If I see that someone is running for office and there's no one running against them, do you know everyone that doesn't have anybody running against them? I run. I don't believe that one person should be on the ballot by himself. Let us choose, don't just give it somebody. And then I'm looking at this. You know about Trump? You know what Trump learned? I used to teach at Red Cross instructor. I was Red Cross instructor, and the kids would be talking, talking, and I'd take up the sign that says, "Even a fish couldn't get caught if he kept his mouth shut." But you see, Trump realized that, you see, he ain't open his big mouth. And then on top of that, you just need to look at this president. You see what filth we had for a president, running around pulling people. And he said it. So it's not, the woman's not lying. I believe it. She had to get that octopus off of, like, he had eight hands. Poor woman. And like he says, she wasn't good enough. As ugly as, I mean, please, I can't call nobody ugly. I know I ain't beautiful, but with his plugged hair and pussy-pulling president, we ought to be ashamed that we even put him on.
Next speaker, please.
Cobblestones, fallow field, acting as a dry riverbed diverting water and pooling. That's creating a very dangerous area. Boast dead, aka Dead Man's Curve, torn up so bad I have to dodge massive broken cement cupcake holders popping out their asphalt cupcakes. Drivers are clueless as I dodge like landmines. Now I'm forced to not avoid the cupcake tins, but it is so hard on my chair, it pops my key, throwing me into a sudden stop anywhere in the middle of the crosswalk. If I'm in danger, other people are in danger. No matter where I try to cross to go, Tim's Market, Sparkle Dragon, and more, it's danger. Senior Center, ADA, the ADA automatic doors are still broken after two years. Meeting after meeting, Mayor Ganey sat here and wrote it down. I'm being told over and over and over, "Oh, we just had a meeting. We just had a meeting. Oh, just press the buzzer." We want our independence. We don't want to press a buzzer and wait for somebody to come open the door. Sheridan meetings. I was told by the mayor's office that if I want to ask for Boast headlights, I have to go to this budget finance, whatever it is in Sheridan. I love Sheridan. Four generations of my family were born on Huxley Street. However, it's not easy for people in Beachview to get to. We are being thrown under the bus. There's another cultural group that is getting all the money, and the multi-generational people of Beachview, the Italians, the Russians, the Germans, multi-generations that have built those houses, we are being forgotten about. Why can't those meetings that are being held in Sheridan come to Beachview? Or is that the plan? For us to just get pushed out as all the money is going to this new cultural group that's in Beachview? This is not right. And I'm looking at you two because you two are the city council up there.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jacob Poole, formerly Jacob, from Europe. I'm here because, and you won't believe this, and I have to apologize ahead of time because I'm not going to say nice things. I'm in Pittsburgh alone, isolated, with my phone blocked, emails blocked, LinkedIn blocked. And I was brought here from Central and Eastern Europe when I was a little kid by myself in a forcible way with half the records alterations. I'm in the Pittsburgh area, kept isolated, alone, struggling to survive. People harass me, hire me, fire me, like, you name it, like, anything, any joke you can play on me, people have played it. I have three kids I haven't seen in four years. Last I saw them, I was alone, isolated, sickly, with strange illnesses, and they were born, they were poisoned, mentally ill, handicapped people. Pictures of us were being taken, posted online on the campus of the University of Pittsburgh and living in the Pittsburgh area. And you won't think I'm saying this about Pittsburgh, but I am, because people brought me here from Eastern Europe when I was a little kid. They caught people over there and they said, "Prepare a child for us from Hungarian, Romanian, Czech-Slovakian parts, East German parts." They went through government changes and instabilities, and people prepared me. They found families of Einstein and John von Neumann and made some smart kids connected to governments and finance, printed me false records and child trafficked me to the Pittsburgh area. First, a liganer using church charity networks, and then to Pittsburgh in isolation. I was forced to get a PhD, work for National Energy Lab, discovering scientific stuff, poisoned my children, posted pictures of us online, sent it back to Europe to harass Jewish families. And you won't believe that this to be true, but every single part is true. Currently, USCIS is sending me documents saying, "Oh, your forceful adoption? We're withdrawing it. You aren't adopted anymore." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to the presentation of papers. We'll begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, ma'am. I mean, Mr. Przygoda.
Thank you. Next is Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Papers, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cross.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1497. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 2163 Censer Avenue. Bill 1498. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Cruise Development LLC, 1709, 1711 Cliff Street. Bill 1499. Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Congress of Neighboring Communities Connect in the Amount of $13,781 for 2023 Municipal Membership Dues. Bill 1524. Resolution Authorizing the City Controller to Pay Annual Membership Dues for 2023 to the Community Foundation for the Alleghanies for the Connect Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $6,891.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1500. Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Gannett Fleming, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $1,479,327.04, an Increase of $873,812.33 from a Previously Executed Agreement as Previously Authorized by Resolution 276 of 2018, to Add Funding for the Preliminary Engineering and Final Design Phases of the Project.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strausberger, if you could offer up papers for myself?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1501. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle for Legal Services in Connection with the Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $12,534.40. Bill 1502. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Risinger, Comer, and Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with the Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $12,432.68. Bill Number 1503. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Sable &amp; Sable LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $20,000 for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Certain Case. And Bill Number 1504. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Three Warrants with the Total Sum of $20,000. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows. $6,000 less applicable tax withholdings and other deductions will be issued to plaintiff Joseph Durech, along with an IRS Form W-2 in connection with his payment. $6,000 will be issued to plaintiff Joseph Durech, along with an IRS Form 1099 in connection with this payment, and $8,000 will be issued to plaintiff's attorneys, Rothman Gordon, PC, for fees and expenses related to the litigation.
Thank you. And Councilman Strausberger, if you'd also be willing to offer a motion to waive Rule Eight on Bill 1503?
Motion to waive Rule Eight on Bill 1503.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rule has been waived and will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Thank you. Then, Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1505. Resolution Amending Resolution 279 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with Planet Technologies in a Form Approved by the City Solicitor in order to provide for compensation for access at comprehensive Microsoft Library for Training, Reporting, and Customized Materials, assistance, business hours to support, manage, and grow Office 365 environments critical to migrating applications to the cloud by increasing the cost by $105,000. Bill 1506. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with Granicus, Inc., in a Form Approved by the City Solicitor for Website Content Management at a Cost Not to Exceed $283,995.
Thank you. And then, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then, lastly, I'll introduce, on behalf of Madam President, a number of papers.
Bill Number 1525. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Council as a Body to Pay Annual Membership Dues for 2023 to the Community Foundation for the Alleghanies for the Connect Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $6,891. Bill 1513. Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Chip Goll as Assistant Director of Facilities in the Department of Public Works.
Given that this one is just informing, can we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Madam Clerk. We have seven appointments. If we can take the first two, which are for the Disruptive Properties Appeal Board, together?
Bill 1508. Resolution Appointing Billy Vaughn as a Member of the Disruptive Properties Appeals Board of the City of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire December 31, 2025. And Bill Number 1509. Resolution Appointing John Katz as a Member of the Disruptive Properties Appeals Board of the City of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire December 30, 2027.
What is members' pleasure? Do you wish to interview or to approve?
Motion to interview.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with the clerk to get those set up. Then, can we take Bill 1510, which is for the Housing Authority?
Bill 1510. Resolution Appointing Jayla Rucker as a Member of the Housing Authority Board of Directors with a Term to Expire December 31, 2024.
Motion to interview.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll get that scheduled, and then if we can take 1507, 1511, and 1512 together.
Bill 1507. Resolution Appointing Catherine Calhoun as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for Terms Set to Expire December 31, 2027. Bill Number 1511. Resolution Appointing Calvin Astor-Ecker as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for a Term Set to Expire December 31, 2027. And Bill Number 1512. Resolution Appointing Julian McLean as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission for a Term Set to Expire December 31, 2027.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three have been approved. And lastly, Bill 1514.
Bill 1514. Resolution Appointing Larry Scarada as Chief of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, Department of Public Safety.
Motion to hold for interview and public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Was your motion? I'm sorry.
To hold for interview and also public hearing.
Cablecast.
Cablecast.
Cablecast public.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held for both an interview and a cablecast public hearing. That moves us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, that moves us on to reports of committee for final action. Well, Councilman Strausberger, if you would be willing to introduce my paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1492. Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for May 3, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1460. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 746. Further Amending Resolution Number 728 of 2022, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Appropriations, Salaries, and Capital Expenditures of the Parks Trust Fund for the 2023 Fiscal Year, Beginning January 1, 2023, by Updating the Transfer from the Parks Trust Fund to the 2023 Capital Budget."
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kill Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1493. Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for May 3, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1453. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Relevant Agreements or Execute Required Purchase Orders with Corrections Development, Inc., for Support and Maintenance of Integration of the Allegheny County Court Scheduling Module into the End Time System, to Include a One-Time Fee for Development, Implementation, Configuration, Training, and Application Design Meetings of $20,000 and Annual Maintenance Fees of $5,000 at a Cost Not to Exceed $45,000.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Kill Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye. The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1494, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for May 3, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1456, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with H.W. Lochner, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phases of both Heron Avenue Bridge and Elizabeth Street Bridge, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $878,570.80. Bill 1457, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Mackin Engineering and Consultants for Costs Associated with Construction, Inspection, and Contract Administration for the Critical Sidewalks, Gaps, and Sylvan Avenue Projects, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $466,516.80. Bill 1458, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Allegheny Valley Railroad Company for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering for the Swinburne Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $10,000 federally reimbursable at 95%. Bill 1459, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Allegheny Valley Railroad Company for Costs Associated with Preliminary Engineering for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $10,000 federally reimbursable at 95%. Bill 1473, Resolution Vacating Unused Paper Portions of Benazet Street, Heath Street, Yule Way, and Oakaway, laid out in the Eastern Edition of New Homestead Plan of Lots, Plan Book Volume 20, Pages 12 and 13, in the 31st Ward, 5th Council District. Bill 1474, Resolution Vacating Unused Paper Portions of White Bush Street and Heath Street, laid out in the Eastern Edition of New Homestead Plan of Lots, Plan Book Volume 20, Pages 12 and 13, in the 31st Ward, 5th Council District.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called, or if you're opposed, vote no when the clerk calls your, sorry. Would a clerk, please, take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Kill Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Burgess, Committee on Human Resources.
Mr. President.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1495, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for May 3, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1452, Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with Talogy, Inc., for professional services in connection with Talogy, Inc., for firefighter recruit testing, reports, and job analysis, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $49,550 over three years.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk, please, take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mrs. Kill Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. And then lastly, we have Councilman Kraus for Councilwoman Gross on the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1496, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for May 3, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1455, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in the Amount of $38,579.50 for the First Instalment of the 2023 Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission Dues.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk, please, take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Mrs. Kill Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That'll take us to motions and resolutions. Council, Madam President?
You have something first?
Yes. Councilwoman Gross did have a small games of chance. Councilman, Madam Clerk?
Bill Number 1519. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognize the Pittsburgh Urban Leadership Service Experience to be a civic and/or service organization with the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Motion to approve, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved. That takes us to meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 10, Council's Standing Committee Meeting is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. Speaker Registration will close at 9:00 a.m. On Monday, May 15, at 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1434 relative to intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license for Cora Sushi USA, Inc. Speaker Registration will close Monday at 12:00 noon. Also, as a reminder for next week's schedule, due to the primary election, Council will hold both meetings on Wednesday, May 17, with regular meeting at 10:00 and the Standing Committee Meeting at 1:30. Speaker Registration will close on the 17th at 9:00 a.m. for the regular meeting and 12:30 p.m. for the Standing Committee's meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council Meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And I want to thank you for chairing the meeting. You do such a great job. Thank you. But I also want to just give the public a little background on what we're doing with it in terms of the Chief of Police. We're going to have a small reception luncheon with him on Thursday to meet all the council members and all of our staff and the entire team on this side of the floor. And then after that, members are going to have a 10, 15-minute meeting with him individually. And then after that, we're going to schedule a public hearing and the public interview. So we want the public to also have an opportunity to talk. And depending on what we discover, we may also call for a post-agenda, which I think I may have done already, so we'll check on that, just so we understand the process and what has occurred. But I do want to say that I'm going to work with Councilman Coghill because he chairs that committee, Public Safety Committee, but we will have some public process so that the public can see how we're making our decisions and they understand what's going on. With that said, we're starting the process, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from members? If not, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
移到
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.